Kind of attention and focus on that is growing the community, as I'm sure many of you are aware. There's been a lot of emails coming into the department, some forwarded by individual council. To the planning department, we will put their email contact on the list and then notify them through that list and additional measures, once we determine the specific forum. I wanted to let you know that other departments are working on similarly related issues. Finance and legal are working on a kind of a immunity services contract to look at enforcement for complaint. Basically, you have to issue a written warning before you can enforce penalties. So just wanted to give an update on that, because I know there's a lot of interest in the community.
Okay, terrific. Mr. Palmer? Before I get to members of the council, let me simply state that despite the asterisk on the front page of our agenda, the real Sharon Kroll is here tonight and not away. And we're not looking at a hologram or an apparition. Thank you very much, Ms. Kroll, for being here. So, members of the council, Mr. Pitts?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Kroll?
Nothing to report.
Nothing, thank you.
All right. I have just one quick matter. I received an email today to the effect that a member of the Napa County Regional Park and Open Space Committee resigned, and that there's an open position on that most important committee. And I would bring that to the community's attention, so that hopefully we have some applicants from the city of St. Helena for that countywide committee. Consent items. I'm going to read each item, and if any item is to be pulled, please advise. And that includes members of the public are entitled to pull any item on the consent calendar, in which case we'll go through the normal staff report discussion, et cetera. Item eight, consideration of proposed approval of a resolution approving a contract amendment consultant service agreement with Jerry Haig, consulting planner, to provide professional services, planning services, for an amount, an additional amount of $20,000, and for a total amount not to exceed $145,000. Nine, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving an agreement with Marin IT to provide information technology services for a total not to exceed, for a total not to exceed $60,000. Ten, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving a contract extension consultant services agreement with the municipal resource group to provide professional planning services for an additional amount of $40,000, and for a total contract amount not to exceed Eleven, second reading and adoption of proposed ordinance to amend chapter 13.04 Water Service System of the St. Helena Municipal Code to include emergency drought regulations. Twelve, recommendation to the Napa County Board of Supervisors that St. Helena resident Peter F. Murphy be reappointed to the Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee. One quick correction there, Mr. Murphy is no longer a St. Helena resident, but he is a county resident, and a county resident can be appointed by the city of St. Helena. Does anybody wish to pull that item? Thirteen, consideration and approval of a resolution approving a two-year marketing and promotional services agreement between the city of St. Helena and the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce for a maximum sum of $210,000 for fiscal year 2015-16, with an annual review of the scope of services and budget for fiscal year 2016-17. Anybody wish to pull that item?
I would like to pull item number thirteen, please.
Fourteen, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving a budget adjustment for National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration fines in the amount of $25,760 to fund 561, which I believe relates to what I always refer to as that damn dam. Is that right? All right. Anybody wish to pull number fourteen? So at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve consent items eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us back to item thirteen, which is the contract with the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Mitch, you're the director, finance director on that. You're going to speak to that briefly, or maybe Mr. Doring could express his concern.
Yeah, I don't think we need a full-blown staff report. One of the concerns, maybe someone from the chamber can have a dialogue with me right now, but one of the concerns I had is wanting to see some benchmarks now, so that when you come back in May of next year, you'll be able to have a comparison. And it wasn't, it wasn't clear to me that that was being done. It would be cleaner for me to maybe come back in 30 days, or even just send it to the, I don't know if it has to be part of the contract, but it'd be nice to see the benchmarks that the chamber has come up with, so that in a year when we evaluate how great you've done, we'll be able to make the comparison. So that was the one question I had.
Let me open the public hearing and invite the chamber to respond.
Hello. Pam Simpson, St. Helena Chamber of Commerce. Appreciate that thought, and always welcome the opportunity to speak before you about the chamber, what we're doing, and all the exciting things that we have going. So I understand that you'd like to see kind of where we start. If you want that to be an item we put on the agenda, and I come and do a presentation, happy to do that. Our board last year during our retreat came up with strategic goals, and we set benchmarks. We spent the fall setting benchmarks as to where we were on a lot of the marketing things. That was presented to the TID, and it was presented to, it's been presented to Visit Napa Valley at several conferences, and to our marketing committee. And so we do definitely have those benchmarks of where we currently sit. And then we have the goals set for where we intend to go, or what we're hoping to do. And I'd be happy to share those with you. If the whole council's interested, I can either send it to you in a, in a report, or I can come back and, and do a presentation. Like I said, I'm always happy to come here and talk about what we're doing, so.
I think what Councilmember Doring has in mind is a benchmark that is a listing of, of what you think you can achieve that's objective, against which we can then measure how well you do. So it's kind of a matrix. It's subjective. It might be 10 things, might be a page or a page and a half long, but it provides a baseline and says, here's where you, here's where you will be in one year, and if you're not, you're going to be measured against it. For example, an example might be hotel occupancy rates, or average, I always think of ADR as alternative dispute resolution, but average daily rate.
Average daily rate, right.
That kind of thing. This is what it is today with our marketing program. Here's where we think we're going to be within one year, and then we can test it against that. That, I think, is what would be helpful, that would give us some objective measure as we evaluate the contract in a year, years' time.
Perfect. That's exactly some of the measurements that we're doing. Some of those, especially with occupancy, you know, especially with, with marketing for lodging for heads-to-beds, what we call the goal is, strategic goal would be heads-to-beds. One of the measured metrics against that is, are we increasing occupancy? Are we increasing our ADR? And we're looking at, you know, Smith Travel Research, we're looking at our TOT reports, which we've been working with the city on having those revised. And so those are definitely part of the metrics, or part of the things that we're, we're being measured against. And so those, I've got that all, and like I said, I can either do that as a report to you directly, or I can come back and do it, but those things are in place.
My suggestion with it would be that you come back at the first meeting in September, not with a long report. Again, look at it in terms of something where, where we have a starting point and a baseline from, from the standpoint of being able objectively to measure contractual performance. That's what I think is of interest to Mr. Doring, and now that he's mentioned, of interest to me.
Great, okay.
So, and I'm all for accountability and making sure that we're getting results for the dollars that we spend. There are, are other communities in the Napa Valley requiring these type of goals to be achieved, to continue with such arrangements?
So there's, almost every chamber contracts with their city to do, to perform services of some sort, and so every contract's a little bit different. All the chambers are required to come back and do a yearly report, an annual report, and show, you know, what they, what they have achieved. I think that there are a number, even Visit Napa Valley says it's, sometimes it's difficult to, to really measure, you know, how PR is doing. And of course, you know, it's going to be hard in just one year with the limited budget, because actually $210,000 is not a lot, when you look at what other communities are spending to, to move the dial. It's really not a lot. So we will make sure that our projections are in, in line with that, and make sure you understand, you know, what it is we really can do with, with the limited money that we have.
I just don't want to create unrealistic expectations that then cause us to say, we're not funding this anymore.
Right.
And, and actually go backwards.
Well, because, because sometimes...
Especially with competing hotel rooms coming on in other communities, which may actually naturally decrease our occupancy levels for, due to no fault, or, or lack of effort on the chamber's parts to try to, try to raise them. There are external things that we can't control, so just want to be mindful of that.
And sometimes it's not necessarily how many heads are in beds. It could be, because not everybody stays here, but it could be clicks-through on the website. It could be...
Dollars spent.
Dollars spent. It could be, you know, different, different, there's different ways to measure.
Right. All I want is, is, is a listing of perhaps 10 that seem reasonable, or five that provide some form of measurement.
Right. And we, and like I said, we have all that, and that's, and it's exactly what you're, what you're just talking about.
You know, in terms of...
We get monthly reports on that, on the, at the TID.
I, I don't dispute what you're saying. I agree wholeheartedly with, with the points you're making. I'm looking for trends. One year is not a trend for me. It's the first year of starting the metrics, so over the next 10 years, we can see, I think we're going to see, the investment is, is, I frankly think that the investment's too little right now. I want to be able to justify to the community that we need to put more in there, but I need the metrics and the performance, so that we can go over the next 10 years. I am, I'm certainly not using, intending to use this as some kind of a punishment, or, oh, I'm going to slam you, or, you know, hey, so you didn't do this. That's not my intent at all.
No, and, and for us, it's about being realistic, too. It's about where, where do we take the limited money and really focus things so that it is effective? Because we don't want to just spin wheels, or, you know, or do things that are ineffective. So it's a good, it's a good check and balance on us as well. And if it's something that's not working, we're, we're definitely in a position to say, okay, that didn't work, what can't, what else can we do? And, and switch gears. So it's definitely a check and balance that our marketing committee and our board has already put in place, and so it's, it's not a problem for me to come back in September and show you everything.
Okay, terrific.
Then I, I would move approval of the item...
Wait, 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 wait. We close the, like, first of all, see if there's any other public comment?
I anticipate not.
All right. No further public comment. Mr. Doring?
I would move approval with the proviso that the chamber come back in the first meeting in September to provide its own metrics, its own performance measures.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Next item is item 14, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving a three-year professional services contract with Van Lant, Van, Van Hannel, LLP, in the amount of $29,700 annually for audit services. Ms. Bits?
Thank you very much. By the time, hopefully, they, they get here, I can pronounce that last name. We just wanted to give an update on the auditing firm. As many of you know, we've used the same auditor for 23 years. And so while we do definitely appreciate Terry's services to the city, and the audit city's done, we really want to provide a fresh set of eyes on our financial books for this year's CAFR. So as you guys know, the state law requires local governments publish an annual set of audited financial statements, which is referred to as the CAFR. The financial audit preparation of the financial statements does have to be done by a licensed CPA independent firm from the city. What we did is we sent out an RFP for professional auditing services back in March, with all responses due by April 24th to, to the city. It is for a three-year contract with an option to extend an additional two years if we're, if we're, if we're happy with their services. After we submitted the RFP, we had a total of four respondents to our RFP, so myself, our senior management analyst, Mandy Kellogg, as well as Mark Walsh, who's a CPA who's been working with us. We independently reviewed all the proposals we received back, and then out of our review, we did a tally system, and what we determined was the top two candidates. And then myself and Mark did interviews with the top two candidates. And VLF, to make it easier, was the firm that we thought was the top candidate that would best fit our needs at the city. Some of the factors that we based this decision on was the extensive experience auditing other similar California cities with the same size and scope as St. Helena. The engagement with staff throughout the audit process. We felt it was really important for them to constantly communicate with staff, as opposed to come in and doing their fieldwork, leaving, leaving us a laundry list, and not being available till the final fieldwork. The understanding of reporting requirements and deadlines. Also, Mr. Van, Van Hannel, I'm going to get the last name, he's a certified fraud examiner, which we felt added another level of expertise to the audit process. And then the overall cost was definitely something that we, that we took into consideration. The contract cost for a VLF is $29,700 a year, and that will be for a three-year contract not to exceed $89,100. The other thing that VLF did, did confirm with us, that if their expenses run over what they anticipated, they are not going to charge us for it. They wanted to make sure that they came in, did a correct audit for us, and really worked with the city, and so they have made that guarantee to us that even if their, their costs exceed what they estimated, they're not going to charge us the extra. So it's my recommendation that you do approve a resolution in the contract with VLF, and if it is approved, they will start their fieldwork end of August.
Okay, terrific.
One quick question?
Well, any initial council discussion, yeah?
What was our previous annual expense for auditing services?
Oh, you know what? I did not put it down on here. We were spending between $20,000 and $25,000 a year.
Okay.
So it's slightly higher than what we were spending, and Terry's numbers fluctuated. He had a base rate, and then any additional work he did for us, he would charge us his hourly rate, but I believe it averaged to right around $25,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any further initial discussion? Let me open the public hearing. Any member of the public wish to comment on that? No? I'll close the public hearing. Any further council comment? I have just a very brief comment. First of all, our prior accountant, his full name was Terry E. Krieg, and he served the city for a long period of time. His audit report for this last audit period, for the, for the, for the year ending June 30, 2014, was discussed at our council meeting on April 14, 2015. And that's where the audit opinion is, and he identified certain deficiencies in internal control that he considered to be material and significant deficiencies. And among those issues, as we all know, was our Measure A issue. And so I want to applaud staff for taking advantage at this point in time of changing independent auditors. It just seems to me that, that best practices, in any event, dictates a change at least every so often. Mr. Krieg had been with us over 20 years, and in some ways, the easiest thing to do is to keep on with the old auditor. But here, here, and especially in light of what happened to us before new management came on, to me, it underscored the need for a new set of eyes, and I really appreciate the city taking the initiative and, and, and getting a new set of eyes, and not just being satisfied with the, with continuing the status quo. And again, that doesn't mean any criticism by me of Mr. Krieg. I just think that best practices requires that every so often you change your independent auditors. Thank you very much. So with that, unless anybody else has anything further to say, I'll invite a motion to approve the contract.
Move, move approval of the contract?
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right. The next item on our agenda is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution appointing applicants to various boards, commissions, and committees. And we've got quite a number, and I propose to take them up in the order that they're listed on our agenda, meaning that we'll begin with the planning commission. And we have everybody's applications. We've all been through the applications, but if any applicant wishes to speak further, who's an applicant for the planning commission, I would invite that person to come to the podium and speak, but don't feel you have to speak.
Good evening. I'm Mary Coburnstein. I appreciate the opportunity to be here again with you this evening. I discussed my qualifications and experience with you in some detail earlier this year. So tonight, I merely wish to underscore sort of the breadth of my experience in land use and development in both the public and private sectors. As you know or may remember, I've worked and am working as an attorney, a general counsel to a real estate development company. I've been a member of a local zoning board, and I've also worked for many years as a city planner and director of community development. And I think based on that, I can make a meaningful, you know, perhaps unique contribution to the analysis of the issues, you know, and resolution of the issues that come before the planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You're getting off scot-free. No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Please.
Hi, Donna Hines. I have applied for the opening on the planning commission, because I feel like I'm well-qualified to serve on the planning commission. I have a legal background. I practiced law for 13 years. I have an undergraduate business degree, so I understand the business issues that come up. I've served on various committees and, and other, like, civic functions for the last several years. I've attended all of the planning commission meetings during the last year, so I'm very familiar with the issues and, and the meeting procedure that goes on with the planning commission, and feel that I can be of, of service with those issues. And I just hope that you will consider my application, and I'll do the best of my ability to make the best decisions for St. Helena.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further speaker here?
Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing. The way this works is that the mayor nominates, the mayor will invite a second. We have a splendid group of applicants. Ms. Hines, from whom you just heard. Ms. Coburnstein, from whom you just heard. Edwin Williams. Lester Hardy. Brian Kramer. And Oliver Caldwell, who withdrew. I've given this a huge amount of thought. I do think there is one candidate who provides us with a unique background and experience by virtue of the fact that she's been a planner, that she served on a Board of Zoning Appeals, that she specialized in land use and real estate, that in, early in her career, that she was, how do I say this? General manager for a general plan revision. That requires, as I, as we all know, real patience in any community, especially ours. But here's a person that, that quite frankly provides a, a unique experience, unique in, 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 in all my years watching planning commissioners be appointed. And to me, at this point in time, she was certainly a very close call last time for me, and to me, our community can and should take advantage of this wonderful expertise that's being offered to us. And so I nominate Mary Coburnstein. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Black, call the roll.
If we can, could we make all the appointments?
No, we're going to make them one by one.
One by one, okay.
But we will never remember, otherwise. And I'll work with you afterwards to get it right. Don't worry about it.
Okay. So I'm sorry, we had, so we had, you made the...
Ms. Coburnstein.
Who made the second? I'm sorry, who made the second?
I did.
Okay, Kroll. Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Would it make sense at the end of all of the, the various appointment votes, to then do a confirming vote, so that we can adopt the one resolution that's been prepared?
I'm prepared to do that at the end.
Great.
I can do that. But we're going to, she's got a very good resolution, so I'm hoping that we'll get it filled out properly as we move along here.
Donna, Donna, thank you for your application. Appreciate it. Please apply again, because I, I think you are, you would add to our community, and I'm glad to see that you are continuing to go to these meetings. That's, there's only one other person I know who's been to that many meetings in one year. She's sitting right next to you. Thank you very much.
And I, like I told the mayor, I'm just glad that there were good candidates that stepped up, so I just want the best...
And you were one of them.
Yes. There is, yes.
Thanks to all the, all the applicants, actually.
Absolutely, absolutely. One thing about the planning commission is that we learn is that, is that openings come up sometimes at surprising times. In fact, I really have had two that I did not expect already, since I've been mayor. So there we are. The next one is the active transportation committee. We only have two applicants, and it's for a two-year term. I've spoken to both, and I'm going to nominate Michael Chiswick and Brian Kramer, each for a two-year term. And I'm going to stop until Ms. Black tells me that she's got those names in front of her.
Okay, good.
All right. Is there any further council discussion? We have two applicants for three positions. And keep in mind that Mr. Kramer applied for every applicable position, which was interesting, and I'm going to accommodate him on two.
Okay.
All right. So, Ms. Black, I think there's no further discussion. Oh, is there a second to, to?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, Ms. Black?
And just to confirm, that was for the two, two-year term?
Yes, and, maybe I should open the public hearing, but I don't see anybody here that's going to speak to that, so I'll close it. Okay.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes. So does this, does this mean we still have two positions that are open?
One.
One.
No, on the, on the active transportation committee?
That is correct. That is correct. There's two positions...
It said four available positions up top.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we have two that we filled, so this is a good time...
We have two that we filled, so this is a good time to maybe invite the public. Can we continue to get applications and fill in our next meeting?
Well, what I hope we do here is that we open the application process again in August with the closing sometime right after Labor Day. And then hopefully we'll fill out any committees that are not filled out. And my confusion here was, yes, it says four available positions, but it says three for applicants to a two-year term. I guess there was a one-year term? Okay.
There was filling a vacancy. Someone resigned from position. That's.
All right, in any event.
So we'll do it in August when people are back from the summer and hopefully more.
Yeah, August, early September. I think it's a mistake before Labor Day. The next one is the Library Board of Trustees. And here, there are three available positions, each for a two-year term. And rather than nominate one by one, I think the council is entitled to know who I intend to nominate altogether. And I've given this a great deal of thought, and I'm gonna add a suggestion here. My nominees are David Finney, Terry Wood, and Lynn Weber. Finney would be new to the Library Board. And to my way of thinking, it's very important in our community when we have a chance to appoint younger people to our committees. David might not view himself as that much younger, but I certainly do.
So do I.
Ms. Westgate, excuse me, Ms. Wood and Ms. Weber are both current trustees, and they've been trustees for a short period of time. And it seems to me that they should continue on. My suggestion for council consideration when we do come back is that we consider adding an alternate for the Library Board of Trustees. And if we were to do that, I would certainly invite Jan Darter to apply for it. But for the moment, the nominees would be David Finney, Joan Westgate, and Terry Wood. Let me take them one by one.
Wait, wait, wait. You said Lynn Weber.
I'm sorry. Let me back up. Let me take them one by one. David Finney, is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
All right. Is there any further discussion on Mr. Finney? Cindy, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
I have Ms. Westgate in mind for something else. Terry Wood, is there any further, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
And third is Lynn Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
And again, I'm assuming there was nobody in the public that wished to comment. If there was, you need to speak up as I move through this. With respect to the Multicultural Committee, I have just one nominee, and that's Malagros Castro for a two-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
And again, I'm assuming there was nobody in the public that wished to comment. If there was, you need to speak up as I move through this. With respect to the Multicultural Committee, I have just one nominee, and that's Malagros Castro for a two-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
And again, I'm assuming there was nobody in the public that wished to comment. If there was, you need to speak up as I move through this. With respect to the Multicultural Committee, I have just one nominee, and that's Malagros Castro for a two-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Parks and Recreation, there are, here's one where there's one available position, and we had five applicants. The applicants were Christine Tally, Rebecca Martin, Brian Kramer, Tara Blum, and Matthew Demchuk. And I pondered this one a great deal, but based upon the resumes, it seems to me that the person that can provide the greatest immediate contribution based upon long experience with parks and rec is Matthew Demchuk, and therefore, he is my nominee, if there's a second.
Oh, I second that.
Any public discussion? All right, any further council discussion? Go ahead.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
The next one is Sustainability. There are five available positions. There were four applicants, but that included Mr. Kramer. So I'm gonna make three nominations.
Well, maybe he wants to be on that one, too.
We've discussed it. I don't wanna overburden. And there's always a chance he can apply again when we reopen this one in September. So my nominees for the Sustainability Committee are Thomas Vince, Sarah Chapala, and Tara Blum. Are there seconds to each of those?
Second each of them.
All right, is there any public discussion? Seeing none, let's have the roll call one by one. Mr. Vince?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Next one is Sarah Chapala.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And finally, Tara Blum.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Yes.
Kroll, Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Turning into a tongue twister for you.
All right. The final one is the Tree Committee. And the Tree Committee, we have six available positions, of which two are for two years, one is a two-year alternate, two are for one year, and one is for a one-year alternate. We have nine applicants. And I'm gonna revise that for the moment. Suzanne Ortega has withdrawn. She does not seek reappointment. And she's served on the committee for five years. And certainly, I think all of us owe a deep debt of gratitude for her service over five years on the Tree Committee. And there's nothing easy about serving on the Tree Committee, let me say that. And I appreciate very much her service, and I assume I speak for everybody else. But she called today and said that she was withdrawing her application. So I'm gonna provide who I'm nominating first for two-year terms and then one-year terms, and then we can go through them.
Can I just say one thing before we start? Edie Koush?
Yes.
Her home address is listed in Napa.
That's all right.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
She's a current member of the committee. She's a master gardener and.
I just wasn't sure, because we had a debate about that before, and I just.
Yeah, no, I've checked that, absolutely. And I interviewed her, too. So for the two-year terms, for the two-year term, I'm going to, I would like to nominate, I will go back through them, but I wanna give the council again an overview. Scott Freeland for a two-year term. Eddie Koush for a two-year term. And Joan Westgate as the alternate for two years. For the one-year term, I plan to nominate Connie Kay, Carol Troy, and for the one-year alternate, Susan Allen. So the only person that I was not able to fit in, given the withdrawal of Susan Ortega, was Maria Koush, or I'm not sure I'm pronouncing her name appropriately. So let me start with the two years and see if I'm drawing seconds, and we can go through them. Scott Freeland, who has a different, quite a different background, very much a business background, and I'm very much pleased to see someone of his background apply for the committee because sometimes in the community, you hear, well, the Tree Committee is just composed of people that love trees too much and isn't providing a balanced view. And I don't think that's a fair criticism because I think people who make that criticism should go to the Tree Committee and go to its meetings and see what they contend with. Having said that, I do think Mr. Freeland provides quite a different background from the applicants we often get. And so I would ask for a second to his nomination.
Second.
My next one for the two-year term was Edie Koush. Certainly, my understanding, she's a master gardener. My understanding is that her work on the committee has been excellent, and she deserves renomination for a two-year term. And this is in the context, by the way, where many people wanted only one year. And I twisted her arm into two years. So I would ask if there'd be a second.
I'll second that.
All right. And then the two-year alternate would be Joan Westgate. Keep in mind now that Ms. Westgate applied for another position where I could not put her, but she's also applied here, and I think she would be a good addition to the committee as well. Is there a second for a two-year term?
Second.
All right. So let's go through the two-year terms and get a vote. You ready, Ms. Black?
You guys.
Okay, let's start with Scott Freeland.
Scott Freeland. Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes. I didn't second it, but yes, that's fine.
I didn't, but that's okay.
Okay, so Scott Doring, that was white, okay. Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Okay. My next candidate for the two-year term was Eddie Koush. Ms. Black, would you call the roll on Ms. Koush?
I believe you. Councilmember Doring, what did you do?
You did Scott Freeland.
Did I? Yes, I did. Thank you, yes.
Oh, you guys.
You can put him as second for Scott Freeland. I did Eddie.
I think it's kind of a moot point once we all vote.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Did I say Mayor Galbraith?
No.
Okay, Mayor Galbraith.
But yes.
Oh, boy.
Joan Westgate as the two-year alternate.
She's been out here six thirty.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
All right. For the one-year term, Connie Kay.
Second, or.
Oh, yes, we have to have seconds here. Connie Kay, you second?
Yep.
Mayor Galbraith? Vice Mayor?
All right, go ahead.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
All right. For the one-year term, Carol Troy. She's a current member of the committee.
Mayor Galbraith?
Second.
All right.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.